We will call to order our regular city council meeting Monday, January 4th, 2021. Ms. Kent, would you please call the roll?
Ames?
Here.
Copeland?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Here.
Hausmann?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Patundo?
Here.
And Guanci?
Here. Councilor Hausmann, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Hausmann, and welcome, Councilor Copeland. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, January 4th, 2021. Confirming member access is a preliminary matter. This is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Head nod would be great. Thumbs up? Dynamite. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Welcome, Councilor Flaherty. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me, the chair, to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22: All subcommittees of the council should cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee, actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by a majority vote order any matter pending before a subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be forth returned to the full council. So, as we all know, that means that rather than refer things to committee, we'll deal with them on the floor as long as we have a two-thirds vote of the city council. So I will ask Ms. Kent to put a roll call in.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Patundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. So as I mentioned before we went live, we will go to all business first, and that's Order Number 279, a comprehensive master plan of the City of Beverly. And I will turn the floor over to Ms. Darlene Nguyen, our Planning Director, and Mayor Michael P. Cahill. Mayor Cahill, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you for having me as well. I did try very hard to fix my video while you were doing all that, and it didn't work. So, sorry about that. I'll get it right once, one of these days. So, the mayor asked me to start with a brief presentation, and then I'll give him a chance to say a couple of things, and then we look forward to a discussion with the council. First, I just want to thank again the Master Plan Steering Committee that supported us in developing this plan, the Planning Board for their review, and all of the members of the public who participated through either attending meetings or participating in the various surveys that we did or talking to us at various city events. If you all likely know, at least most of you know, have been involved in this process and know that we started it about two years ago and had hoped to be done in March last spring. But due to the pandemic, we kind of put the draft on hold to refocus our attention on some other more pressing issues and then came back to it this fall. So, let's see. So what is a master plan? A master plan is a long-range planning document. We've set a 10- to 15-year timeline of high-level planning and policy goals for the city, looking at various aspects of community development and setting a vision for the future of the city. And part of our, you know, most master plans include a broad discussion with representatives from all areas in the city, and that was a really important goal for us, to have as much citywide discussion about the plan and the future policy direction as we possibly could. So what is covered? So the state of Massachusetts doesn't require master plans, but if you do a master plan, you are required to address these seven elements: land use, economic development, housing, mobility or transportation, cultural and historic resources, open space environment, and public services and public facilities. And it was very important to us when the mayor set the charge for this master plan that the topic of sustainability ran throughout all of these different, these seven kind of silos. And so when we think of sustainability, we think of environmental sustainability, social sustainability, and also economic sustainability. So a community that can be thriving and productive and successful into the future. And we also note that none of these, although I said silos a couple of minutes ago, none of these categories are really independent of each other. They have significant overlap, and although we did put them in separate chapters, they all interplay with each other in various ways. So I did touch on this, you know, we did start, say, with the RFP in January of 2019, and ended a very, you know, we hired our consultant and got, and started with our first public meeting in March, sorry, in May of 2019, and really spent the summer and early in that fall really working on public outreach and community engagement with various community events, two surveys, a number of focus groups, three larger meetings, and then we added to our scope of work seven neighborhood meetings that we held in the fall of 2019 to really dive into some of the topics in more detail. I've added this orange line on the right of the slide. That's kind of where we took a break, returned in fall and winter of 2020, and during that time, we had a focus group on equity. We had a number of planning board meetings to revisit and refresh the plan for the planning board, and Emily Hutchings and I held some virtual office hours in a hope to solicit or provide an opportunity for feedback. And then here we are now in our revised schedule of winter 20, where the planning board adopted the plan at their last meeting on December 15th. And that is the, per the state law, the planning board is the approving authority for a master plan. But as we mentioned at the last meeting, we're here before you recognizing how we work together as a city and asking for your endorsement of the plan as well. So as I mentioned, having a robust public process was really important to us, and so we were really pleased with the attendance at our public meetings, and the participation in the two surveys. One was a standard question survey that was online and in person, and there was over 600 responses to that. And the other one was an online mapping exercise, which complemented the mapping exercise that we did in the seven neighborhood meetings, and there was over 450 people that participated in that online exercise. So we were really pleased to have the level of outreach that we did for this plan, and all of those people helped to inform the plan and particularly the vision and the priorities that are identified in the plan. So these are just a handful of some of the visions that we had, about, I don't know, 30 or 40 of the pictures of these different boards. I don't like to read slides. I mean, I'm just stating that this is the vision that we put in the plan. It's the high-level vision, and then on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about the priorities or the principles that go along with that vision. But as I mentioned, this vision was derived from what we heard from the community in the survey and the initial public meetings. So the key themes and principles that have come up throughout this planning process and ended up defining this plan within the seven categories that we were following, plus sustainability, is that we are balancing redevelopment with natural resource preservation so that specifically preserving undeveloped areas where we can and focusing development or any additional development in areas that are not untouched or green as they are. Meeting the housing needs of the residents and those who want to live here. So understanding that it's not just people that are here that want to live in Beverly, people who don't yet live here or who have lived here before and want to come back are also important. And being able to find opportunities for housing for people across the board of all different age categories, different lifestyles, places in their lives, different ethnicities and cultural representations, and all levels of income as well. And I think we did lean a lot on our community housing plan that was already adopted to inform some of the strategies here and adapted and updated that as necessary. And then promoting the conservation and protection of land and water resources, particularly taking into account climate change and resiliency needs. And again, I guess I should take a break just to say that one of the things about this plan that we set forth is we really take into account a lot of the planning work that we have done in the past and also the planning work that we are continuing to do. And we didn't want to duplicate efforts either. So we draw on a wealth of prior plans that we've done in the last few years, including the community housing plan, the mobility hub study, the parking plan, let's see, the Bass River Vision, the waterfront plan. And we also anticipate drawing on and, kind of, I'm trying to think of the word I used before, but relying on the Future Climate Action Plan that we're working on in Salem right now as well as the preservation plan that was recently completed in November. So this plan is, this master plan is high-level goals, a blueprint or strategy, set of strategies that will be further defined by both other planning activities and other policy changes that we put into place in concert with the community. So to jump back, sorry, to the principles. Additionally, having a diverse employment base and opportunity for business growth. So high-quality jobs and also workforce training to help people get into those jobs, promoting connectivity between industries and also having an industry or an industry base in Beverly or maintaining an industry base in Beverly that is is broad and not focused on a singular entity so that we can be economically resilient in times when there might be a recession or when, you know, one industry is struggling. Also, transportation, so having a well-connected network of streets, bikeways, pedestrian walkways, as well as transit opportunities. Having opportunities for everybody in the city to engage in civic life and participate in quality social services and education and other attributes that the City of Beverly provides and will continue to provide, and continuing to celebrate the cultural and historic identity of the city now, yesterday, and of its future residents. These are kind of real, just so you know, just real, real brief summaries of the actual principles that are listed on the page with the vision. With that, and with the exercise, the mapping exercise that we did, the plan developed a conceptual land use vision that highlighted areas where the community thought we could accommodate or set priority growth areas. During the mapping exercise, we called these kind of transformative development areas in some situations. And then also neighborhood centers that could accommodate commercial mixed-use activity like they do now, particularly businesses that serve these neighborhoods, neighborhood-serving businesses, convenience stores, small package stores, restaurants, others, small service stores of a smaller scale. And then noting the priority preservation areas that primarily overlay with a lot of our varied open space and noting that some of those are protected, the darker-hatched ones, but the lighter areas are actually not protected areas, and keeping that in mind as we develop our land use plan. And then I wanted to walk quickly through the plan layout, just to understand. I really like the way that UTO, our consulting team, put it together. I think it's easy to read and get through. Sometimes these documents can be very long. This one is still long, but I feel like it reads pretty well and is highly graphic-oriented. It starts with a letter from the mayor. Then we go into an introduction that, you know, briefly talks about the background, the vision and principles that I already went over, and describes the community engagement. From there, there are seven different chapters that align with the seven categories that I mentioned before. And these are the plan recommendations. And so in each chapter, and I'm going to just run through at least one example, there's the existing conditions and analysis, then the thoughts from the community, which is a summary of the community input, surveys, and public meetings. And then an overview of what the key issues and opportunities for each category, and then going into the recommendations and strategies. So for example, in housing, we have the data section. So there's maps and charts that tell the story of what the city looks like now in regards to housing and our population, talks about our character of the buildings that we have now. It then jumps into thoughts from the community. So these are summaries of survey, the survey findings, primarily the initial survey with charts and discussion, and then it jumps into issues and opportunities. So, you know, for example, in this one, we've got six different issues. Some of them have less, but these are kind of the key issues that came out of the public feedback and our analysis and understanding of the data. And then just as an example, these are the, because we have a lot of goals, well, primarily five goals for each chapter, but a lot of strategies, I should say. So we have, I just pulled out some examples. So for this goal, the goal, it's housing supply. So increase the amount and diversity of housing options for individuals and families at different life stages. And then we have about 11 different ways in which we can do that. One is allowing denser multifamily and mixed-use development in the Bass River area and downtown through rezoning. Another is regulating and enforcing limits on short-term rental uses to ensure that our housing stock is utilized for permanent residence. And then, let's see, I went through just another, and the environment is a very, you know, all these are all the same layout, so again, data and maps, charts and maps, thoughts from the community, our summaries of the survey responses, including quotes from people, issues and opportunities that come up out of this category. And, and again, goals, outreach and education. I picked this one because, you know, one of the strategies is to develop a tree planting plan throughout the city. And so it happens that this fall, we had the opportunity to apply for a grant to do some more tree planting, more than we usually do. And so here we are already trying to check that one off the box, at least, at least for this year. That doesn't necessarily mean that we would stop doing that, but we'd be able to kind of hit that goal very quickly. So next, where we are now, I guess I should say, plan adoption and implementation. So the plan, as I mentioned, was adopted by the Planning Board on December 15th. We are seeking the endorsement and support from the city council, and we'll begin implementing it immediately. We are, as I said, already looking into what we can implement. This is just a sample of what we started to put together as an implementation matrix. And we will use this basically to track ourselves and measure our progress or something like this, to measure our progress over the next 10, 15 years, however long. We feel that this plan, you know, serves the city. And so these are the thing, we've got the objectives, the actions that are in the plan, but then we're going through to put in who's responsible for this, who will lead this action, who will they partner with, what is the timeframe, budget if there is one or source, and then the status of that action. So we can use this kind of checklist to measure our progress throughout time. And I guess I did also want to mention that, you know, although we didn't have something like this for the 2002 plan, you know, we have, our last plan in 2002 has, was, served us well. And we did achieve, the city did achieve a lot of those goals in that plan. And so this is hopefully something that will also be a good tool for the city. So with that, I wanted to hand it over to the mayor quickly before opening it for discussion, questions. Do you want me to get out of the presentation?
Suppose.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Mayor Cahill, thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Nguyen, and thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple of thoughts, in some ways really, to reinforce. As Mrs. Nguyen said, really, one of our highest priorities throughout this process was to make sure that we maximize the public engagement, involvement, guidance. In a lot of ways, the community wrote this plan. That was really the goal. I say that to you, knowing really, most of you, perhaps all of you participated yourselves in much of the public process. But, you know, we went further than a lot of communities do with the public involvement and process. The three workshops, the online surveys, the Master Plan Steering Committee with representation throughout the community and lots of great thinking and brainstorming and input. We went beyond that, and if you remember, and I know you do, we had seven neighborhood meetings beyond all of that. And we went out to every neighborhood in the city and we really, you know, worked hard to reach out through neighborhood groups, school PTOs and elsewhere, to bring people into the process. And I think we did a great job collectively of that. And that's important because this plan is a plan that, that we said right from the outset, needs the legitimacy of having been, you know, really crafted by the community. Because we together want to and need to rely on this plan for the next decade and more. As Mrs. Nguyen said, the master plan that this has replaced was, I think, a similarly well-done process, and it provided a strong plan that we together have been able to really work hard and lean on for a number of years. And I hope that's the case with this going forward. As you all know, two of the needs that really, I think, we have seen consistently in recent years and have been reaffirmed and reprioritized in this plan are the need to meet additional existing and ongoing housing needs. Housing for people in all stations of life and all phases of life, housing for people of all income levels and types of household. And we also continue to need opportunities, real opportunities, year in and year out for economic investment, development, redevelopment. And what we've tried to prioritize is meeting as much of that housing need and as much of that economic development need through redeveloping of existing parcels, or should I say, already-developed parcels of land that maybe aren't performing as well as they can, as a way to avoid developing green space. And we look together to try to find ways to protect existing green space that is undeveloped but not yet protected. So those are a combination of values taken together there. In asking you folks to consider taking a vote to endorse this document, we think it's very, very important that you do. As Mrs. Nguyen said, there's not a statutory requirement that you do. The Planning Board has already taken the vote to approve the plan as required by statute. But given that this is a process that we've all participated in and given that the values and themes really represented in this plan are our template for the next decade or more, I do think it's important that you folks consider and hopefully take this vote. It won't mean that you agree with everything in it. It won't mean that you'll support every recommendation, but it means that you're comfortable in embracing the whole of the plan, the values. I would say one of the overriding values is that Beverly has always been a place that people can find, people can discover Beverly, or people can grow up here and either never leave or leave and come back. But we've always been a place that people can choose to call home. People can choose to open and try to build a business here. People can choose to live a life here in Beverly. And that's a value that we really want to work hard to preserve, even as we look at a number of, a number of values and priorities that need to kind of layer in together, that we need to find ways to complement each other. It's a delicate balance. There's a lot of detail and nuance to it. I think the plan accomplishes that, or should I say, sets the framework that will empower we as elected officials representing our residents and residents themselves and business owners who we fully expect and hope will be involved, decision by decision, in what will come. That we're excited to take this whole with you and get started in trying to implement some of the recommendations in the coming year and in the coming years. So I really am grateful for your attention to this and all the work that you as individuals and that so many other people in this community have put into it over the last couple of years. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor Cahill? And it's amazing, you're here with us and you're also on everybody's Zoom teams tonight.
Sorry about that one. I had to rush a call out because we need people to know to put their Christmas trees out at the curb.
No worries.
A public service announcement? On the day you're trash recycling or picked up, starting tomorrow, you got one shot to get your tree picked up. So if tomorrow is your day, you better put it out when you get home. But that was, that's at least part of the message you might get on your voicemail later. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mayor Cahill or Ms. Nguyen? Councilor Rand?
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you for confirming that. I really enjoyed participating in this process and was amazed at the public participation, either, you know, through surveys or at meetings within wards. And also was really thankful that, you know, whenever, I know personally, whenever I had suggestions of, it may be this particular group or committee or, you know, collective of people would be, would have valuable input, both the planning department, Mayor Cahill, and, you know, the consultants were just very happy to accept that as feedback and connected with, like, people like the bike committee, the Human Rights Committee. So I was, I think that's wonderful, and it's reflected in our, in the final product. And actually, I'm thankful for the delay in putting it out. I think it's a better product than it would have been, and it includes some really important things about equity and racism and justice and sustainability that I think wouldn't have been there had it actually been completed in March. So I have like a couple just sort of detailed questions. I noticed on the map that some of the places in green, the protected open space and the, like, places you desire to protect, I noticed those aren't shoreline. I noticed those aren't shoreline beaches like Dean Street Beach or Independence. Can you just, from my knowledge, tell me why that wouldn't be in green or just so I can explain that to constituents?
Mrs. Winn, why don't you go ahead? I, I know you've got an answer there.
I know it's a small detail, but Ward Two has a lot of water.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a fair point. And I think I remind people that the map is really not, that map, the, the bubble map I call it, came out of the public process where we could combine dots that were concentrated in areas. So it's not necessarily the be all and end all of everything. It's just meant to be kind of a high level, really kind of fuzzy visualization. In terms of fuzzy is probably not the right word, but we didn't really want to be precise. And there are also other, other, other restrictions and areas where, where coastline will be preserved in terms of chapter 91 regulations. You know, certainly do not anticipate or predict, you know, redevelopment in the plan on any of the beaches or natural spaces that exist on the coastline. And there's an effort, I think, a recommendation or strategy that, that hopes to actually increase public access to the shoreline along the river and the harbor front. So, so while they may not have the green blobs, blob maps, very technical term there, you know, they, that doesn't mean it's not an important resource area for the city. But I understand your question. Yeah.
That's good to know. And then I just have one more basic question, if I may, President Guanci.
Of course.
Okay, so I, I was really fascinated to, to notice that there, Ward Two has a lot of overlay, a lot of the different overlay districts in it already. And, and now I'm kind of looking at the, the plan, seeing how those overlay districts are kind of now being called opportunity zones. And I'm just wondering, just kind of from a planning perspective, I know that an opportunity zone isn't an actual piece of zoning or, you know, zoning ordinance. But I, I'm interested to hear kind of how you see that playing out. Or just like the connection between the overlay district and the opportunity zone. And then just a comment, I was also just really happy, and I think this is reflective of the amount of input that was received, to see that the, the targeted growth areas are really spread across the city. And they're not just by the depot, which is kind of nice. I mean, there's a significant Bass River is nothing to sneeze at. That's a huge target growth area that I, I, you know, I'm somewhat conflicted with anyway, but I am glad to see that that, there's, there was a real, real effort and open mind to targeted growth areas. Thanks.
Can I clarify?
Did you check that first? Yeah.
So when you're talking, when you say opportunity zones, you're not talking about the federal opportunity zone, right? You're, you're talking in a more general way? Or are you, I guess I want to clarify.
I'm talking about how in the master plan, the wording of the, basically like the targeted growth areas are called opportunity zones in the master plan.
Okay.
And I noticed that those, often those areas link up with the overlay districts that exist right now in Ward Two. Anyway, I was focused on Ward Two.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think about.
Ms. Winn, let, let me say a couple of things while you're gathering a thought there. If, if you think of that, that map that, that was shown earlier, the two largest areas in that map are Cherry Hill Industrial Park and the Dunham Otis Road Brimble Ave area. Well, including Sawyer and Tozen, right? So those are the, those are the two commercial industrial sectors right along the highway and, and adjacent to. And then the other areas that we looked at were these mixed-use opportunities in the transit-oriented mode, right? So it's some additional around the depot in downtown. It's some opportunity up along Enon Street in North Beverly, which we've had some recent conversation about the fact that that's probably not a near term. And in, in some ways, it may be a bit of a holding, you know, you know, hold that thought and, and the, the transit improvements that are going to come in the coming years may, you know, make that more desirable and more timely always down the line. But there'll be some more study done in that area. And then there is, there are some neighborhood development opportunities at the other train stations and at a couple of other spots. One you saw a hatched area was really the intersection by Henry's and the North Beverly Fire Station. Another was that, that little stretch in Stenaville with the, the gas station dunk, the gas station, Richfield. Another one was downtown Beverly Farms. So another one was a stretch along Bridge Street in, in Ryleside. Areas that have been neighborhood commercial for a long time. So there's a range of what you look at there and scales will be different. And as I said, you know, timing, when something may be more ripe will, will probably be different. And those are the things that, you know, those are the details we'll start digging into together. Some of them won't be really so different from the status quo, you know, the way things have been. But, you know, that's, that's where we'll dig into a lot of the details together going forward. And that's why I say there'll both be lots of opportunity for, you know, for neighbors and other residents in various parts of town to, to look at what we're thinking of and weigh in and, and all that. So I'm rambling now, so I'll stop for Mrs. Winn.
Yeah, and so that gave me a chance to actually look at, look it up in the plan. And we do reference the federal term opportunity zone, which it's a federal program. So we didn't set that in, in this plan. It just happens to align with that area. And it's tied into, you know, not intentionally tied into the overlay districts necessarily, but it aligns with census groups, census blocks. So that's an existing program that they are, that properties in that area, you know, potentially to incubate new development or a higher use of projects or investment and business investment. And trying to think, I'm not sure if the Sedna was able to take advantage of that, the, the new waterfront project, but that would be an example. And so that, I just, that's not something we created specifically, but it just happens to overlay, shouldn't use that word, it happens to align with the overlay zones that you noted in that, that part of downtown. So more of a coincidence than anything else, but we wanted to call out that that area is in fact not participate in that federal opportunity zone program, or they're eligible to participate in that.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rand. I'm going to go to Councilor Copeland because he had his hand up early, early on. Councilor Copeland.
Yes, can you hear me?
We got you.
All right. Thank you, Council President and Mayor Cahill and Ms. Winn. I thank you for that presentation. Helped to enlighten things a little bit more. Question, one of the big questions I have is you talked about the, the values of the program. What we have the values versus the implementation? So I wanted to see is as we go along, is there going to be an opportunity for us to check back in as far as how these things are being implemented? Because we, we've seen before with, say, affordable housing, where it might be affordable for a year, but then the prices are changed, to change the situation. So are we going to be able to look back into these things, especially as you put together different programs to address different types of housing? Will we still be able to reach back and have a say in those things at that point?
Mayor Cahill, Ms. Winn?
I can go. I think there are a variety of different strategies in this plan. Some of them are things that we can implement from an administration level or a staff level, and many of them are things that will require city council review and approval, particularly zoning changes, funding allocations, things like that. And that's, that's one point to check in. You know, everything, this plan is really a roadmap to start from. And it still, there's a lot of work required to put a lot of these things, each of these things into place or somewhere. And there will be opportunities for city council members, the community at large, to check in as we develop those strategies. And certainly, I think, you know, 10 to 15 years doesn't seem like a long time, but as we know, things change. And, and this, this has to be a fluid document. We are planning on incorporating findings from the climate action plan, findings from a future equity plan that we hope to undertake next year. And, and we may need to, you know, make adjustments as time goes and say, well, maybe that's not the right strategy for us right now or at this point, and we need to look at it a different way. So I think it's important to keep that in mind too. That yes, this, this is not, not without future input and, and.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, just like, I think you've done a great job with the process, going out, reaching out to the people. Then, you know, you didn't have to come to us, but you wanted to have that partnership and that buy-in. So as we go along and we develop these different projects, I want to make sure we still kind of had that same communication and relationship developed to make sure we're all going in the right direction.
I think, I think, I think we're definitely on the same page there. You know, I mean, we, we only get things done together really. You know, so I think as Mrs. Winn said, there are some, there are some things that, you know, that can be done and are already being done. But the, the real, the big ones, you know, they're, they're going to involve decisions that involve you folks for the most part. You know, we, we hope and expect it will be coming your way in the, in coming months with a deeper conversation about the Bass River overlay, for example. You know, that's, that's something that was a recommendation of the old master plan, has been studied and has been kind of moved forward a few times to a certain point and seemed to be best the subject of more, you know, more, more of a planning effort. And I think the type of input that, the type of input and evolution of thinking that has accompanied the conversations around the Bass River waterfront are reflected in this plan. And hopefully you're going to, are going to help us together find a, you know, the, the right balance that's going to be something we can all support as, you know, when, when that comes forward in the coming months. And that's, that's an example that, you know, the work is not done on it for sure. And, and we'll be doing some of that together in, in the coming weeks and months.
Yeah, and if I may add again, just you made me think of this too. I mean, we've learned a lot about public outreach and engagement during this planning process. We're also continuing to learn a lot about it during the climate action plan process. And the one thing that I don't want is, is to say, well, we did our public engagement and wipe our hands and so we don't have to do it for 10 years. You know, we created connections, we created listservs and social media avenues to reach out to people. I think one of the, you know, one of the important, I think, comments, somebody, vision statement somebody made was civic engagement. You know, it's, it's not just about us telling, it's about people telling, like finding the connection and the way that they can connect into the planning department, the administration, the process as well, and knowing what's going on. It's kind of a two-way street. And so hopefully we can maintain that as well going forward.
All right. Thank you, Council President, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Winn. Appreciate it.
Councilor Feldman, please.
Thank you. I, I'd like to thank Ms. Winn and Mayor Cahill so much for the amount of work that you have both put into this. And kind of piggybacking on Councilor Copeland's question, reinforcing the idea that we will have a part of it and a say in this moving forward in terms of input and feedback from our constituents. Because coming up to this process, I know that I have been in several meetings with Mayor Cahill and Ms. Winn and my constituents because we have a great deal of the transformative areas are actually in Ward Five. So there has been a lot of, prior to this plant, this version of the master plan coming out, input. And I just, I, I am, I'm very grateful for the, the conversations that went on prior to this version coming out because there was a lot of concern in my neighborhood. And I, I had an interesting perspective in that I was not actually an elected official during this process. So I got to participate in this process as a constituent. And then I saw this to fruition as a counselor. And some of, some of the plant, some of the ideas actually incorporated that caused ire were, were my own. So that was, I really, we really worked, it, it was just a really good sign of working collaboratively together with both the neighbors and elected officials and the planning board in really coming to a good solution for everyone. So it gave me great hope and faith in the living nature of this document and getting things done together. So that's all. My thanks.
Thank you, Council Feld. Council Flowers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I guess I will also just echo the words of thanks from the counselors who have spoken before me for all the work that's gone into this and the public process. And looking back at the, at the presentation, I was struck by that room with all the people in it as we were starting the process and thought like, oh, remember being in a room with a whole bunch of people like that? And it being exciting and the energy together. And then I was excited because I recognized my hands holding one of those whiteboards. So it just caused me to go back and really think about this process and the journey that we've been on and that then our planning staff and you, Mr. Mayor, and our planning board have all been on, along with residents of our city. I had a couple of questions around that were, my, my thinking jumped off from our focus on transit-oriented development and our focus on being a multimodal community and increasingly multimodal community. So if, if I may, I have just two questions sort of along those lines. The first, and I guess they kind of both ask us to project into the future, which is of course what the plan is, but it, it may be that we can't fully answer these. But I was curious, you know, so much of our plan obviously focuses on our emphasis on TOD and transit-oriented development and developing across, across the city, which I agree with Councilor Rand, that's a real strength, I think, of this plan, that the, there is emphasis on looking at our entire community in terms of opportunity and where we can grow. But I was curious right now, and you know, I think we all hope that things will improve. But given that the MBTA is looking at service cuts and the commuter rail itself, probably they're looking at reduction of maybe 30% service across the commuter rail, which is of course our most central public transit. What, what do we imagine, if anything, the impact on our plan may be? I think, you know, hopefully, we can hope that there'll be brighter days in the, in ahead for the state. But seems like logical to expect that just given everything that's happening, that that might not happen right away and that the MBTA would be part of that. And so I was curious, do we envision? I didn't, I did note that at least for now, our line of the commuter rail is slated to keep some weekend service, which is a plus for us. But I was curious if we envision an impact on our plan or ways that we might, as a city, offer supplemental public transit, probably not to Boston, but around our community. So that was, that was a question I had, just given the landscape that we're in now versus when we started.
Well, there's a little bit to that question, Counselor. Let me go first.
Okay.
You know, as, as you know, I served on the Real Visioning Committee that the, the Secretary of Transportation put together a couple of years ago. And, you know, one, one thing I was very excited about was we were a 23-member group from all over the, the region. And we unanimously landed on, on a recommendation out of seven options. That recommendation was a full electrification and full station rebuild of the whole system, which we recognize would be a 20 to 25-year project. But it's, you know, it's a, it's a real critical piece of the region remaining economically vibrant and economically relevant in an, you know, in, you know, an international competition for, you know, for vibrancy economically. So there's that. And then there's the, the need to address transportation holistically in order to drive down our greenhouse gas emissions regionally as well. So there's, there's a lot there. But your question was, you know, is it going to knock us sideways? I'm kind of paraphrasing. I, I'd say it may slow a few things. But certainly 21st century sustainable urban living is still going to be, and by urban, I, you know, I mean, it's, it's neighborhoods, it's downtowns, it's, you know, depending, you know, whatever the scale is of a given area. But when you look at a transit system and you look at those, those transit nodes, stations, connections and all, it's really important that people are able to walk to more, not all, but more of their needs, be they errands and, you know, and, and recreation, whatnot, and commuting for, for education, for healthcare appointments, for work. and commuting for for education, for healthcare appointments, for work, a whole range of things. So I do believe, and I think it'll be proven out, that, you know, that that's still a model that makes sense in the longer term. The Fiscal Management Control Board of the MBTA had had embraced the the Real Visioning Committee's recommendation and had said, okay, a first step is early electrification of three lines. The Providence Line, which is already partially electrified, the line that goes from South Station out through Hyde Park and beyond called the Fairmount Fairmount Line, and the Newburyport Rockport Line up to Beverly. So the plan, the plan they embraced was regional rail up as far as Beverly, electrification up as far, by Beverly, I said Beverly Depot. And and that's something they were looking to try to do in a five-to-seven-year window. Now, does that get delayed some because of COVID and bouncing back from COVID? I don't know. I hope not. May, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's not, doesn't get delayed, but how how quickly can we still get to it if it's delayed a little bit? Right? So I think some of what you're asking, it may be that there's a, there's a little more sluggishness to getting going with a few things. But I do, I do think in the bigger picture, what this plan lays out still makes sense for our community and our place regionally.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my second question, I think, sort of flows right from what you were just responding, and that was really helpful to me to be able to think about that. I guess I'm curious if we imagine, and maybe this this is part of living into our plan, but would we, as a city, imagine thinking creatively, too, about what kind of supplemental public transport we might want to offer? Because I agree with you completely that the more people can access their needs without having to drive far or get in a car or, you know, create more greenhouse gases and emissions, that's good for us in lots of ways as a community and as people. And so I'm curious if we might, if things are slowed down in terms of shifts with the MBTA, is is part of our plan or part of our creativity as a city and a multimodal, increasingly multimodal community, thinking creatively creatively about how we could supplement some of that? You know, I think, I was thinking about, I think we've talked about before, Mr. Mayor, but bike shares, or I noticed Salem has their own ride-share program now. So just intrigued to think about what cities can do, thinking creatively about this. So I wonder if that will be part of our, if you imagine that will be part of our living into this as well.
Yes, I mean, there were things that were in the works before COVID. We were, we were part of a regional procurement to try to get a bike share. We talked about doing a bike share on our own locally. Salem had already kicked one off. We, together, as as the North Shore region, went in with MAPC on a, on a, an RFP. We got back the bids and then COVID hit. What we found is that nobody wanted to do a bike share unless they also got to do a scooter share. And nobody wanted bikes, and I say, nobody was willing to respond on bikes unless they were electric boosted bikes. So I would say that, you know, and then, if you remember, we got that grant to do the study of the of the mobility hub right at the Beverly Depot, where we would put resources together from there, walking routes, our, you know, our bus route coming through town, bike share, scooter share, zipcar availability, a range of things right there at the depot. So it it's going to come back around. I think it's, you know, a lot of things are just on pause. In terms of what other things we might do, those we're going to try to move forward with. Some other things might come after some of the transit improvements as opposed to before. For example, makes sense to me that there's going to come a day, and I'd love to hasten that day, when it's going to work financially to run a shuttle bus from North Shore Community College in Danvers through downtown Danvers right into, right into downtown Beverly. You know, but the these are things that you have to figure out how to finance them, how to subsidize them if they need to be, and how to make them, make them work. So, you know, but let's, let's brainstorm. We don't need to wait on on identifying the needs and opportunities. I think quite, one question will be, how much can we do in advance of commuter rail transit improvements and how much will follow on?
Thank you very much. I'm I'm definitely excited for us to be able to work together on on some of these initiatives. So thank you for those answers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flowers. Counsel Haussmann.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I I want to start out by echoing the comments of of my colleagues and thanking the mayor and the planning staff and the Master Plan Steering Committee for for all the work that's gone into this nearly two-year-long process with a really extremely well-written, a well-written report. Having, having, and also, I would, I would be remiss to, if I did not comment, that I found myself on Saturday, December 2nd, 9:00 p.m., plowing through the master plan, which may be a comment on on my lifestyle. And sent off a question to Darlene Winn, fully expecting to get an answer back sometime on Monday to my question about the master plan, only to have, only to find a reply from Darlene Winn at about 9:20 on Saturday night, December 2nd, which speaks to both, you know, her lifestyle, but also incredibly, her her dedication to, you know, as a city worker, to get back to me so late on a Saturday night while, you know, I was plowing through the plan. Having said that, I have not finished going through the plan. And at least for myself, you know, won't be ready to take any kind of a vote, one way or another, on the plan this evening. So it's my hope and expectation that the council may decide to have an opportunity at our next meeting to continue aspects of this conversation. I sort of have a, a, an observation and a question. I'll start with the observation, that, you know, the the plan makes reference to the growth in the city is necessary because it provides revenue that the city needs to pay for high-quality schools and and city services, which I fully agree with. We are, I I've put it somewhat more harshly, I guess, at at times in saying that, you know, the city is, is an addict, the city isn't, is addicted to new growth structurally, fiscally, in order to be able to provide those kinds of city services that that we want to provide, that people expect from us. And I I do feel somewhat conflicted about that, because I recognize, given my experience with city budgets now for nearly 10 years, the the pressing need for that revenue. But given my experience, both on the zoning board for, you know, 15-plus years, and other experiences with development in the city, I know that there can be a lot of sensitivity around development issues. And so I, I, I do sort of feel somewhat conflicted. Counselor Rand talked about, you know, the Bass River area, sort of feeling somewhat conflicted about that. And and Counsel Feldman sort of, maybe obliquely, but sort of maybe referenced similar kinds of 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 tension around development and the opportunity for it, as well as the, you know, the resistance that sometimes comes from change. So one of the things I really is sort of focusing on as I do a deep dive into the into the master plan is trying to weigh the sort of the the tension between those things. And so without sort of dwelling further on, you know, a lot of details, because I have questions about a lot of details, and I I hope to be able to sort of send off a list of those to, you know, to the mayor and 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 Ms. Winn, perhaps for some, some kind of responses to them. I am, I am curious about, just to take one, one of my questions is somewhat at random, I suppose, and that is the priority growth areas along along the Cabot Street corridor. Mayor, you referenced Dunham, the Dunham Road and Cherry Hill areas as sort of the largest priority growth areas. And yet, to, I would say, a large extent, if not primary, or, you know, mostly, those are non-residential areas, are generally speaking, not affected by, and and don't sort of hold the sensitivity around development in the same way as, say, the the Cabot Street corridor, or maybe, you know, the North Beverly Station or Bass River. So speaking just by, for an example, the development around the Cabot Street corridor, what do you envision, and this is a very open-ended question, about what that means as a priority growth area in terms of retaining the character that I think is important to most Beverly residents about the way Cabot Street is presently? Because there's a lot of sensitivity around, I mean, all we have to do is look at at the, you know, Depot Two development, right? And the, you know, the bruhaha around saving one historic building. Historic preservation is a big part of this plan. And yet, the difficulty in in trying to save that one building was, you know, was epic. So I'll certainly leave it at that and sort of give you an open-ended question to both Ms. Winn and and the mayor around how you envision what it means that the Cabot Street corridor is is listed as a priority growth area.
Can I, do you want to go first, Mayor?
Let me go first, and then you can fix my mistakes. How's that? So I, I want to say a couple of things. Thank you, Counselor, for the, both the thinking and the question. And I I agree with you, you know, even as we, even as we recognize a need for some consistent new growth year to year, sometimes it's a little challenging to see where it's going to come from next. Except that communities all over the world, much older than ours, are able to realize new growth on a regular basis. But it it doesn't happen without some effort. So I think your your point's a good one that we have to keep working on together. On the Cabot Street corridor, two things. One, we recognize, and it's become clear through a lot of our work together and certainly through recent projects and the master planning process, that our design guidelines, you know, are going to undergo significant updating. And I can leave any more detail to that to Mrs. Winn. But, you know, that's important to people, you know, how how things look in in both buildings that are preserved and rehabbed, new buildings, et cetera. And another thing, probably to keep in mind with with Cabot Street, no, I totally blanked on my other point that I thought was very astute. I've forgotten it. I'm going to let Mrs. Winn speak, and if it comes back to me, I'll share it.
Feel free to jump in, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Haussmann, for those questions. I think that the, first of all, priority growth areas don't necessarily always mean, to me, or as how I envision it, changes in in density that are significant. There are ways to grow and to redevelop along Cabot Street and in any corridor that may maintain a similar scale, a similar structure, similar look and feel. And one of the strategies that we are focusing on for the downtown zoning in particular is to distinguish better between Cabot Street and Rentoul Street, to what the, what the parameters are and should be of what those streets look like when future development is proposed. And that maybe Cabot Street, you know, should not have the same height limits that Rentoul Street does. And also looking at the way the CC District, zoning district is is worded, which can be very confusing, and relies a lot on adjacent properties, to try and simplify that in a way that we can better get what we want. Because zoning, the the best zoning tells somebody exactly what we want to see. And so how, and as the mayor said, we we think the design and the look and feel of buildings is very important in that nature. So there are opportunities for commercial and mixed-use growth, mixed-use growth along both Rentoul Street and Cabot Street corridor, but they might look very different or different. And they, and it's important to calibrate that correctly for us. So that is one of our shorter-term priorities, is to take another look at the CC District and see how we can improve that in order to accommodate some growth that is acceptable to the community and supports our downtown.
I have a follow-up question, but maybe Mayor Cahill has recalled his.
Yeah, I did remember a couple of things. You know, when we look at Cabot Street, you know, the zoning there currently is 55 feet. You wouldn't think so, based on what you see there. So, you know, we do need to, you know, kind of have conversations and be careful about how we proceed. I will say that there are a couple of parcels that we're going to, you know, we're going to be looking at together. One is the Dollar Store building and lot, because, you know, we've been, we've all been hoping that they'll do something better with that building. And in fact, they they've come in and expressed an interest in starting that conversation. We also know that that the Archdiocese is looking at what to do next with St. Mary's School and Convent. And, you know, those are, those are either right on, in the case of the Dollar Store, or just off of Cabot Street. So, you know, there, there's work to be done together on on how we proceed there. The other thing I did remember is, just just to give fair credit to the neighbors of the Brimble-Dunham Otis parcels and the neighbors of Cherry Hill, we do hear from neighbors who have concerns, and oftentimes very legitimate concerns, about potential developments, even even in those areas as well. You know, we expect to have ongoing conversations with them about some, some pending and upcoming proposals that we know are going to happen there. So it doesn't, your point was a good one, that wherever we look, there are neighbors who, you know, who who live adjacent and/or own a business adjacent to, and, you know, have have genuine and legitimate questions and concerns and need to be part of the conversation as decisions are getting made. But that, that's certainly the case with every, probably with every parcel we could imagine, somebody trying to do something different with than is currently happening today.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. President, just a follow-up.
Of course.
Yeah, so I certainly, I mean, I would say that the development behind what was Casa de Mota is a very sort of sensitive, you know, sort of design-specific that helps retain the character of of Cabot Street and and its new growth. So it certainly can be done in a way that's sensitive to the context. And, you know, I certainly agree that, you know, those residents around Dunham Road and Cherry Hill certainly have a stake in and care about, you know, what goes on there. The scale is a little bit different, though, compared to the to the downtown urban areas. Yeah, I guess that, you know, to Counselor Copeland's point about, you know, future implementation of the plan, I, you know, it's been my experience that when the master plan contains text that is supportive of an argument or a position about development, it gets quoted. When, when you're on the, if you have opposition to it, sometimes you'll find a conflicting statement in the master plan, and so that will support that. And so it is, it's a, it's a document that's freighted with an awful lot of significance over the quarters of, you know, the 20 years in which it's going to be used. And so my my concern is, to Mrs. Winn's point about, you know, zoning is exactly, the best zoning, is zoning that tells you exactly what it is you want to see. By the same token, 15 years on the Zoning Board of Appeals, emphasis in this case on the, on appeals, no matter how well-written a zoning ordinance is, or even a master plan, there will be a lot of room for interpretation as you go along. So I think it is important to to make sure that we we are all comfortable with the, you know, both, not only the the general scope of the master plan, which I certainly am, but also some of the the more detailed aspects of what's there. So with that, I'll, I'll be quiet and and look forward to hopefully further discussion on this with with you and and hope to get some written questions to both you and Ms. Winn. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Haussmann. Counsel Flary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to thank the mayor and Darlene Winn for putting a lot of hard work into this. And I had a good conversation with the mayor last week on this particular subject. The The idea of why we're here for the master plan was actually the charter commission that actually the mayor's mother was on, that we talked about the planning for the city and the lack of planning for so many years. So, in the late 1990s, this was adopted by the city. And then we had in 2002, had our first master plan. Because a city for so long did not do a great job planning for its future. I do think, as long, I know that the mayor and Darlene, they worked very hard on this. I do wish that the city council was a little bit more involved as a city body, involved in this. We will have the opportunity, as Councilor Hausman talked about, and Councilor Copeland, that, yes, zoning is part of it we'll be involved in, but to make this a success, and the mayor talked about it, we're going to have to work together to make sure this blueprint framework, that we can make sure this can happen. And I know Councilor Hausman talked about Cabot Street and Rantoul Street, but not only through there, but throughout the whole city. They talk about, for me, during this process, the last couple of years, character has been a big part of what we talked about in a lot of these meetings. Because when, for example, when the Washington Beetle school was torn down, Walgreens built that facility that could go in New Jersey or Nevada. And to me, it doesn't fit the character of our community. A few years later, CVS worked with us, with a whole bunch of councilors and people involved, and look at the difference between the CVS and the Washington Beetle. When you work with one of these developers, they're willing to do that, which is a reason why we really need to strengthen the design review guidelines within the city. So in 20 years, when we're no longer, probably no longer, we're probably part of this, we can look back and say, this city fits the character of a New England community that we want to, and not having the buildings that don't reflect the character of this community. So I do think that's important, and it's very important because the mayor's not going to be here forever. We're not going to be here. We need a document that's going to be a blueprint. So the next time we do this master plan, we can look back and say, we did a good job, and get the community involved.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just after, Mrs. Nguyen, Mayor Cahill, I just want to thank you, even before being sworn as a councilor, I don't even know if I was even, I think we just had been elected, your office and the planning department had taken interest in coming up to Apple Village, which was one of the neighborhoods that you came to. So you did do the Six Wards, but you also made that effort to come up to Apple Village. And I think I've made it abundantly clear to both of you, you know, how I felt that it's an island of its own. It's probably one of the most secluded areas that needs a lot of services. And I know you guys are attending to that, and I appreciate that. So I just wanted to publicly let you know that. And, you know, regards to the reading of the document, it was of ease. I mean, it didn't take terribly long to read the 168 pages that were there. There were a lot of pretty pictures on there. But I did appreciate that. It was actually a very informative document. So I really didn't have any questions that I haven't been asked, or haven't asked you, and that hasn't been asked already. But I just wanted to thank you both for, you know, really digging into the details of the neighborhoods, really including some of the neighborhoods that will be affected by the mobility part of this document. And that's pretty much it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Let's go to Councilor Ames.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. And again, thanks for all the long hours that all of you put towards this project. I have a couple of questions. The first question I have is surrounding just the long-term fiscal picture that this plan will bring in terms of, sort of speaking to Councilor Hausman's comment, in terms of revenue generation and how you believe that this plan, in terms of the development, and also in terms of the public services that will be required will impact the city budget, you know, next year, 10 years from now, and so on. Thank you. That's my first question.
I'll go first on that, Counselor. Thank you for the question. I would say the areas that have been zoned historically, commercial-industrial, are largely kept in that way. We have added, or are looking to add, you know, you all know that, as I said earlier, we hope to bring forward a plan on the Bass River. And so that'll be one of our first discussions, debates, and areas for really digging into this. But, you know, we're looking to provide some redevelopment opportunities in an area like that. As Mrs. Nguyen said, one of our priorities has been to try to facilitate investment in different, in different sectors of the economy so as to not be overly dependent on one sector. And I think, you know, I think our current status with a lot of clean manufacturing, healthcare, biotech, number of things there, together with retail and, you know, kind of general retail and others, we have a pretty good cross-section already. One thing that we found, and, you know, I'm not sure that, we shouldn't have already said this, but there was, you know, in one of the studies done, that I thought was fascinating, we found that more people commute into Beverly on a daily business than commute out. Between people who live here and work here, and people who live elsewhere and work here, for as many people as commute down 128 or into Boston, and this is, you know, pre-COVID and hopefully post-COVID, we even had more people coming in every day, which, you know, spoke in a positive way to our economic health and vibrancy. But I think also, you know, we look ahead, and I do feel that the balance in what we tried to put together on the economic development front lends itself to that health continuing. Mrs. Nguyen, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I will add, just in terms of looking at development, we prioritized, I said, you know, we didn't want to focus, we wanted to discourage development in open and untouched areas, both for preservation of open space, but also because those areas aren't served by city services, infrastructure services, like water and sewer, as well as these already developed areas are. And so it's easier, and there's less cost to get water, sewer, transport, electricity to these areas. Also, transit-oriented development. There are studies that show that it has significantly lower costs to a city than new kind of suburban-style development. So it's a fiscally sound investment in terms of that aspect. And, you know, we could go on about schools as well. It tends to generate fewer schoolchildren and higher-density housing. Although we'd like to see a broad cross-section of housing type so that we can serve the entire community, and people can move around within the community, right? Downsized and upsized, things like that. The other comment on me, a couple of years ago, we were a housing choice, well, we still are a housing choice community. But one of the grants that we had the opportunity to get as being a housing choice community, which is a program from the governor's office, we were able to get a grant to create a fiscal impact model tool. And it took a little bit longer for us to get that, just due to the consultants and people changing hands and things like that. But we did recently get the final product, and that's a proprietary database that they built for us. We have two licenses in City Hall that we can use. We haven't actually been able to use it on a project yet. So that is a neat tool that we'll be able to basically input development projects into and figure out on a case-by-case basis what the impact to city services is. So, just kind of, not kind of off-topic, but something else that, you know, we'll be able to use as we implement this master plan. And we wanted to be able to have it available when the master plan was ready so that we can kind of mesh that.
Thank you, and that's great to hear. It really is. And I believe that biotech, clean tech, blue, you know, blue jobs, blue companies are really important for our city's future. The second question really is surrounding change. And whether that would be, for me, because I was a little worried when I dug a little bit and haven't totally dug into it. And this is when we've had some conversations about this, about the historic preservation plan. Because obviously, in Ward 3M, I'm mighty concerned with the plight of those neighborhoods between Cabot and Rantoul. And the ability to maintain the character in those neighborhoods and over by even those Gloucester Crossing neighborhoods without too much gentrification. And the ability to keep those, many of those neighborhoods at a price point that's more working-class and where you can have a more diverse, hopefully, group of people living there. I mean, I saw Salem just rolled out this week, a new program to give some tax relief to seniors who have been in their homes for 10 years. And I would love to see us try to work together, Mr. Mayor, to try to create something like that here. I think that's phenomenal. I can tell you, I would go door-to-door. And every time I go, I get at least one homeowner telling me that the taxes were pricing them out of the city. So the, so it's a matter of managing change. And while I give you a lot of credit for reaching out and having conversations with as many people as you do, I'd like to understand, in terms of zoning changes that you're thinking about, what will be the public process for those zoning changes in terms of really making sure that they are zoning changes that will be, you can't please everyone, but that will be productive for the people who live in those neighborhoods now and for the city as a whole? Because that is something, you know, that us as councilors, and I think the people living in neighborhoods would really like to have a solid say. And I'm really happy to see that in Ward 5, Councilor Feldman's saying that, you know, listening has been fruitful.
So a couple of questions, or a couple of answers, Counselor. First, when you reference Salem, I think you're talking about their senior tax work-off program, where seniors can do some community service for a certain number of hours, and it can result in a decrease or forgiveness of a certain amount of their tax bill? Is that what you were talking about?
No, I think.
We can chat on it together if you want to look at the details.
Sure, we can chat offline. But I think there's a new change in the state law with the step program and income levels. But we can take that offline, for sure.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, because we try to provide opportunities as well. On your question about zoning changes, you know, any zoning change has got to be voted by you folks, or it doesn't become effective. And I think, help me, Mrs. Nguyen, I think on zoning changes, the planning board has an advisory role as well. So typically, there's a joint public hearing, planning board, city council, planning board will consider and make a recommendation from their perspective to you folks before a vote. But even before that, you know, we spent significant time looking, we really looked at this two sessions in a row. I think it was 2014 and 15, and then again, 16 and 17. I'm looking to some of the councils who have been around a little longer, because we had a good amount of public conversation and input from both business owners and homeowners in the downtown about the potential for an overlay on the Bass River. In fact, initially, we were looking at a zoning change, and we were convinced that an overlay made more sense so that, you know, existing uses aren't just grandfathered, but are continued to be allowed. But, you know, we had a good amount of conversation, and we thought at one point we were ready to move forward. And then it seemed in conversation with the council that we really weren't collectively ready. But we would anticipate a similar kind of community conversation and back and forth before filing something. And then when it gets filed, you've got that opportunity that's required, you know, to have public hearings. So, you know, that's the Bass River, because we anticipate that being the first thing we'll work on coming out of this plan. But, you know, we would look for similar types of conversations and input and back and forth so that the products that come before you and the planning board, if in fact it's a zoning change, you know, have been further vetted than they have even been thus far, right?
Thank you. And then the final piece is that I know the planning, I would like to just hear from Chairwoman Hutchinson just a little bit as the head of the planning board. I know they took a pretty deep dive into this. And just to get a couple of words, if she's still on, about just her view and her thoughts regarding this. So, and then that's it. So thank you.
Ms. Hutchinson, I see that you're here. And, I mean, you're always welcome to make a comment or enlighten us. Would you be willing to do that for Councilor Ames? She's just here to listen tonight.
We also have Mr. Miller from the planning board as well. I'm not sure if there's anyone else.
Ms. Flannery, I believe, is on, and a couple of our master plan committee members, too.
Great. All right, Councilor Ames, maybe you could reach out to her on the side. Thank you. And you're good with your questions, Councilor Ames? Thank you. Great questions. Councilor Rand?
Thank you so much for allowing me to comment for a second time. And actually, this really does relate to Councilor Ames' kind of line of questioning and some of the comments that Mayor Cahill responded with. And I guess I just wanted to share that I'm really, my goal is to use this document as a guide to help me. And obviously, I've heard a couple times tonight that Bass River is coming. So I'm even more committed, my goal. And thank you for providing this guide to help me prepare for zoning changes for myself, as a counselor personally, but also to help my, help me to prepare constituents to anticipate what's coming, to be ready to participate in these public processes. Because I think just, you know, it's great to have a planning document that I can look at and basically say, okay, civic association or whoever's writing emails, here's what's coming. And so how do we get, how do we, you know, how do I activate constituents to a point where we can embrace changes and feel like, you know, there's enough public input to not be so freaked out about a change on Bass River or anywhere in the city? So I just wanted to share that as my personal, my goal as a counselor, to use this document as a real guide to anticipate future zoning changes and just be ready, and to share that with my constituents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rand. Councilor Feldman?
Really short follow-up, along the same lines of Estelle's, or Councilor Rand's question. I was hoping that there, is there going to be some guidance in how we can share this effectively? Is there a link? Is it on the website? Is it going to be posted? Like, just wondering the mechanics of getting the word out to keep people in the loop, and what that looks like in terms of rollout.
It is on the website as of today. I remembered my password for our new website, so it's up there. And figured out how to upload a document. And I think, you know, Mayor Catherine and I, we may also do a press release, probably, or something like that. Need to send out another email to my Plan Beverly listserv and use our social media pages to kind of ramp that out. But yeah, it's up there on the planning department website. We have a page for the comprehensive plan. And I need to take off the latest version, but I have this version up. I have the prior version. I'll take off, but.
And I would say to add to that, Counselor, it's up, and it's not going anywhere. It'll be up there from now on. I mean, that's our, you know, that's the plan that we'll be looking on and looking to and relying on and building from to, you know, to try to make sure that the valleys of the community collectively move us forward.
Great. Thank you.
All good. Anybody else from the city council wish to make a comment or ask a question? All right, just briefly, I think we need to thank Aaron Claus and our former planning director for getting the ball rolling, and then for Darlene Nguyen for picking up and seeing the project through. Great work. Great work by everybody. Mayor Cahill, I have to say, as somebody that was around in 2002, I hate to say that because it seems so long ago when the, we looked at the, last time we looked at the master plan, that I thought we did a good job with public participation back then, but what we've done here is amazing between social media and getting everything out on the city's website, in the meetings at the senior center. We saw all kinds of people involved. We had older residents that had been here for years. We had young families that have moved into the city, that burnt homes. We had renters. We had input from everybody and it was really a feeling of excitement in every one of those meetings. And the planning department in your office really took everything into account, what people said, and you can see that in this document. So, I mean, hats off to everybody. It's a monumental task and it's nice to have it before us, especially what we've gone through over the past year. And Counselor Rand made a great point about, you know, you hate to say that maybe things happen for a reason, but it was great that this was put off until the fall before we finally took a look at the finished product. So, of course, Counsel Hausmann has one more thing to say.
Mr. President, could I, could I just echo? I want to, I want to mention Aaron because, you know, we, we hated to lose Aaron, but I want everyone to know that he's alive and well and he's the planning director in the city of Lynn. It was a, it was an opportunity that he just, he couldn't turn down. So we do miss him, but we were so lucky and we're blessed that Mrs. Nguyen was already here. Aaron and I used to talk about how can we avoid losing Darlene? I didn't think it would be Aaron that would end up leaving, but we were really lucky that she was here. She's been fantastic. She did a great deal of the work on the plan as well in addition to Aaron. But we gave Aaron a call after the planning board voted to approve the plan and we let him know and, and, you know, we, we're, we're grateful for the six plus years we had him here. And just so everybody knows, he's doing great. I, I'd say he, he's missing us too, but I know he's too busy to, to worry about that. He's got a lot going on in Lynn. Thanks.
Too bad because of COVID, we were never able to give him a really official send off, but we're glad that Darlene is here also. Counselor Hausmann.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I, I may stand alone this evening on, on, on my desire to not take a vote to endorse the plan this evening. I know that the planning board met twice before they took a final vote. And given the significance of this plan, which lays out a roadmap for the city for the next 20 years, I want to make sure, at least for myself, that I feel I've given it the kind of review and had an opportunity to ask my questions, in this case, maybe many offline, before taking a vote on it. So I guess my question is whether you want to move this forward. If you do, I, it's my intention to put a hold on, on any such vote regardless of perhaps others' desire to move on.
Thank you, Counselor Hausmann. Counselor Copeland.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I can say, I echo some of the sentiments of Counselor Hausmann as well. I'd like to just have a better understanding of the impact of the plan for Ward Six, at least a basic to a, to a strong understanding, just so I've made sure that I've answered those questions and I've done my due diligence for the ward. So I would love to have another meeting where I would have the time in between to do my due diligence, come back to you, Mr. Mayor, and Mrs. Nguyen, ask the appropriate questions, and then we can finalize it after that point.
I think that's a great idea. And that was my intention. So I would encourage everybody over the next couple of weeks, if you've got some questions, reach out to Ms. Nguyen or reach out to Mayor Cahill. Discuss with your counselors if, as long as you're not violating the open meeting law. And my intention is to vote on this on Tuesday, the 19th, at our second meeting in January, if that's okay with you, Mayor Cahill.
Oh, absolutely. Look, there's, there's a lot in there. You know, it's, it's, it's not an infinite number of recommendations, but there are a lot of them, so please dig in and, and, you know, we're, we're here to answer any questions that you have. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, members of the planning board. Thank you for being here. And I want to thank Emily Hutchins for being here and Chelsea Zakis. Maybe next time, our next meeting in two weeks, you can introduce yourself and say a few words about how exciting, excited you are to work here in the city of Beverly.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Okay. I entertain a motion to hold. Order number two seventy-nine.
Second.
A roll call. You look bored.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Yes, great questions by everybody and great answers. Thank you very much. So now we're back to our regular meeting. We'll go in our regular order. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meeting, which was held December 17th, 2020.
So moved.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Housemann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Communications from his honor, the mayor.
Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $1,400 grant from the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association. This grant funding will be used for two parks and recreation staff to attend playground instructor certification training in 2021. Mass. Law 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant, earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, January 4th, 2021. Thank you sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And our grant director is here and she's been here the whole time, so I think that we need to hear from her. Ms. Barrett.
Thank you, President Guanci, and Happy New Year to everyone. I just want to say welcome to Counselor Copeland. It's nice to see you and I look forward to meeting you in 2021 in person, hopefully. We've applied for this grant last year through one of the city's insurance providers, Maya. And unfortunately, due to COVID, we weren't able to send any Parks and Recreation employees to the training and they didn't offer a training online. So we reapplied this fall and we were awarded the grant for two people to attend from Parks and Rec to get certified as playground instructors. And this, I believe they're going to send the assistant director, John, and one other staff from Parks and Rec. So we were happy to receive this grant.
Thank you, Counsel, yeah, Counsel Barrett. No, thank you, Ms. Barrett. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Barrett? We always like to say thank you for all the hard work you've done in the office over the past. I always like to point out, you mentioned that you're sending the assistant director, John Paydall. I always like to point out that his grandfather was Peter Fortunato, the mayor, back in the 70s and early 80s.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's wonderful.
Doesn't fall too far from the tree. We're lucky to have him. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Ms. Kent, did I read the script?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot ago.
Order number two eighty-five, please.
Do we, can you vote on that one?
Vote on the grant, see? I try to be funny and I screw up. I entertain a motion to approve the grant.
The move.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Two eighty-five.
Two eighty-five. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation, Ms. Chelsea Zakis, Associate Planner for the City of Beverly, to serve as the planning department representative on the design review board. Her term is to be effective until December 1st, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number two eighty-six. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation the following residents to serve as trustees of the Beverly Public Schools. Mary Burley, Kevin O'Reilly, Margaret Altman, Myron Shire Suter, Marshall Hanley, and Ivy Mahin. Their terms are to be effective from February 1st, 2021 until January 31st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number two eighty-seven. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation the following residents to serve on the zoning board of appeals. Victoria Burke, Caldwell, and James Lavassa. Their terms are to be effective from February 1st, 2021 until January 31st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number two eighty-eight. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation the following residents to serve as trustee of the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust. Susan Gabriel, Richard Dinkin, and Mayor McKeel. This term is to be effective from February 1st, 2021 until January 31st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Number two eighty-nine. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. William Loud, a top in tennis commission. His term is to be effective from February 2, 2021 until February 1st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from Mayor Cahill.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Order number two ninety-four. Dear Honorable City Council, the city of Beverly recently opened bids for a lease transaction to acquire an electric school bus for the Beverly Public Schools. Because the term of the proposed lease exceeds 36 months, city council approval is necessary before the lease with the selected vendor Highland Electric Transportation is executed. The lease is for a 10-year term for one type C, 71-passenger electric school bus with total payments of $26,000 per year. We have successfully begun the process of converting the school bus fleet to all electric battery-powered vehicles. With grants, incentives, and rebates, the objective is to continue the electric vehicles into the fleet. This transition to all electric vehicles will reduce harmful carbon monoxide, carbon gas emissions in our community and provide a healthier mode of transportation for our public school pupils and residents. I respectfully request that you approve the execution of this 10-year lease with Highland Electric Transportation for the aforementioned electric school bus at your upcoming meeting at Monday, January 4th, 2021. Thank you for your consideration. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or required additional information. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Mayor Cahill, comment?
Sure, I'll share a couple of thoughts and then I'm sure Ms. Barrett can, can probably elaborate some more. The, this is a longer lease than we typically do with school buses. And prior to last year's, prior, prior to the, the first EV school bus that we took delivery on this past summer, the school department had been leasing to own diesel buses. So we're, we're trying to make the transition away from gas and diesel-powered transportation fleet. It's not a guarantee that they're all going to be EVs nor that, nor, you know, nor that they'll, it'll happen quickly. There's a real big delta right now between the cost of a, of a diesel full-size school bus and the cost of an EV. The diesels cost about $85,000. The EV school buses cost about $330,000. It's a huge delta. The biggest difference is, I think, the, the scale of production that isn't there yet and the cost of the batteries. So you, we really wouldn't be doing this if not for our partner at Highland Electric having sought and secured grants to help them meet the, meet the gap and also their commitment to doing so and their, their model of charging, storing, and selling clean electricity to the grid when the buses are parked and not in use. So there, there's a, there's a, you know, a business model that allows them to afford to do this. Part of it is that they need a longer lease term. And, you know, we, we're not going to try to transition our whole fleet this way, I don't believe, but we're excited, given your support, hopefully, at adding a second EV school bus to our, to our fleet so that we can begin the process and so that we can learn a lot about the performance of the EVs and really kind of be at the forefront of helping regionally and statewide for, for other communities as well to learn just how this all works and how to do it well. So that's what's in front of you tonight. I'm sure that, you know, Mrs. Barrett would have better information if you have some questions, although I'm happy to try to answer some as well.
Great, thank you, Mayor Cahill. Let's go to Counsel Rotundo has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I know you had spoken about trying to transform over to the EV buses, but in regards to the lease term on the traditional diesel, is this some, what's, what's the traditional lease term on the diesels that we pay for?
Yeah, so, so the lease to owns that, that we have been doing are five years and at the end of five years we own. That, that's not the case with these leases. And so, you know, you, you can look and say, okay, we will spend more of our own money over the life of the lease and we won't own. On the flip side, the vehicles have far lower maintenance costs. You don't have any moving parts. You don't have an internal combustion engine with everything that breaks down. You, you have a much simpler system, just doesn't need it, it doesn't cost as much in repairs and maintenance and you're going to save money over time significantly on fueling. So, though, you know, there's, I, I think there's a, there's a strong case to be made that if, say we were to purchase one on our own, I'm not sure we could bridge that delta very quickly, but, but what we'll be spending over 10 years in, in lease costs, my hope is it will more than make up for. You know, we'll track that as we go. We're asking you to join us in making a certain commitment financially of investment to learn these things, to bring a cleaner, you know, a completely clean fuel into the mix and to keep, you know, to take a, a good amount of, 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 what's the word? Emissions, including the kind of emissions that are unhealthy to breathe, including what, you know, what, what exacerbate or, or bring asthma and other problems to, to neighborhoods as we get started here. As I said, I don't believe this model is, is a model that we'll try to follow for the full transition. I think there's a point where we're going to need to be able to own our buses, but I think there's an advantage to not owning these ones as well. So it's a, it's a step in the water, right? It's a, it's a second step, but we're still, still on the shallow end and I think we'll learn a lot from this and my, my hope is that, you know, we'll look back and it'll have helped us prove out the technology, which is, you know, it's well proven in other parts of the world and for other uses. And I, I would like to think, and we'll, we'll learn this together, that the investment we're making here will come back to us.
One follow-up question on that with the lease on maintenance. Who's, who's responsible for the maintenance? Will the city still? I know there's less of a maintenance, so that's not the issue, but obviously it's a 10-year lease and as anything, it's still going to break down, whether it's a door or anything. Who's responsible? Is it Highland or is it going to still be the city?
Ms. Barrett? I, I know our mechanics have been, have been getting trained, but I mean, certain things are under warranty as well. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Rotundo. We don't like to think that the electric bus will ever break down. The only things that really need to be replaced or fixed on the bus are windshield wipers and tires, so the maintenance costs are extremely low. Highland Electric is responsible for the charging, the software updates, and, and the maintenance over the term of the lease.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hausmann.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the mayor, I, I'm, I'm guessing that you, that the, the administration has put together sort of a, a, a chart, sort of projecting out the various different costs. uh, so that you have a way of, of tracking exactly, uh, the relative costs of this compared to diesel. I mean, I, I am all in on making Beverly a, uh, a model city for sustainable energy, uh, and conservation. Uh, a- at the same time, um, you know, I, I, I think the taxpayers, this is a late file, I haven't seen anything other than sort of what we have on our agenda and what we've discussed here. Uh, I would really feel much more comfortable if I saw, uh, laid out, uh, some kind of, uh, chart or, uh, uh, you know, checklist, uh, something that sort of provides what the administration is going to use as a way of, of monitoring, uh, in a, in a quantitative way, all those things you talked about, uh, relative to diesel, so that we as a council have a chance to sort of, with you, in partnership with you, track the measurement of our experience with, with this vehicle, which in principle I am all in on, uh, you know, approving. But I feel much more comfortable sort of doing diligence of, of seeing that in writing before I vote in favor of it, so that I know that we, you know, that the, the, not only the thought has gone into it, but that we have a way of, as we go along, looking at the measurements that's taken in terms of the costs, uh, that are involved in comparison to diesel, so that we can learn with you, uh, through that process. Is there such a chart that's already made, and if not, I, I, I don't feel comfortable supporting it until I have something like that, that I, I know that we, we have to work with.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be tracking all that, and, and I think the best thing, the best, my best answer to you is we'll, we'll get something in front of you that reflects what we're planning to track. And, you know, this, this is only a late file because of the dynamics of the week between Christmas and New Year's. But I certainly agree with you that it, you know, if, if you folks, you know, if, I shouldn't say if, what you're asking makes total sense, why don't we get that in front of you? I'm not in a rush for you to vote this. Um, you know, we, we want you folks to have all the information you need before you are asked to take that vote.
I, I, I thank you very much, Mayor. I, I, I would really appreciate it. I feel much more comfortable, especially given that I'm, I'm all in on the concept. Uh, I just want to feel like that I, you know, that I've seen the work in front of me. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you. Council Feldman?
Thank you, yes. Uh, my question is very similar to Councilor Hausmann's in that, I am also all, completely in support of the idea of moving towards a, an electric fleet. And I need my logos to meet my pathos, basically, on this one, and, uh, I need a cost-benefit analysis, kind of, too, um, really get my head around my logic to support, um, this type of technology. And one of the questions I did have, just so, because I'm taking my notes on the side here about the looking at that differential, I knew you talked about the overall cost, um, the difference of the cost of the total cost of a diesel versus electric, but what are we currently, you said after five years, it's a lease to own with an lease annual lease, or with annual lease payments for the diesel. What is the cost of an annual diesel lease payment?
Yeah, the, the, the lease payment that, that we would pay here, that we are paying on the first of the two EVs, that we would pay here, is calculated to be the same as the annual lease payment on, on the, uh, diesels that the school has been purchasing. So the twenty-six thousand, I think that's, it's, it's either exact or within a thousand of the first one, in terms of annual cost, yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Hausmann?
Y- y- yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, if I may, Mayor, in terms of the, uh, sort of the cost-benefit analysis, something that not only talks about the numbers, but also talks about the, sort of a term sheet comparing the two different contracts between the diesel and the electric. Uh, so it's not simply about the cost, but it's about the contractual terms as well, in terms of stacking up what the, what, what the overall cost would be. The other thing I want to say is, I could theoretically be in support of something that looks like basically a lost leader. Uh, in other words, it's not as attractive economically, uh, on the basis that it would give us an opportunity to learn, right? Uh, because if we're going to be leaders, uh, part of it is the learning process and being willing to accept that learning curve. But in order to do that, I, I need to have, have all those other pieces in place as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ames?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I agree, um, completely. Um, and just even the solid number for really what a diesel would be, just to help to put it in, in perspective, because, you know, for me, eighty-five divided by five is seventeen. But I, so to understand, you know, just understand, you know, there's, there's interest, there's this, there's that. But also even drive it down to fuel, too, because I know the diesel, that, that number there is probably easily a thousand dollars a year just to run there, and I, I concur with Councilor Hausmann. I mean, I, I think this is, um, a, a great progressive step um, in modeling the kind of behavior that we hope to see and we hope to be here in the city, so it's, it's worth a trial run and having taken a ride on a bus and looked at one of these electric buses and understanding the, um, work that you and Mrs. Barrett and Lisa Littleland and Highland have made, not just with this bus, but also with the charging stations, the investment that's been had that, um, I think that this is a positive step. It, it's just a matter for us to be able to make sure we really understand the, the complete picture. How long do we keep a diesel? You know, so we understand just really the entire investment we're going to make. That would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
But it's a great point. I, I look forward to the conversation in a couple of weeks. We'll, we'll get materials together for you all. I will say, you know, I said earlier that we may find it advantageous, more advantageous, to be a, a, a less E than an owner. Uh, and one of those, on one of those fronts, it has to do with the technology around the batteries. You know, the tech, battery technology could be so far ahead of where it is today in seven, eight, nine, ten years, that we'll be glad to, you know, have had this experience and be ready with a future purchase to, to be an owner than a, than a, than a renter. So, you know, we'll, we'll see on a number of fronts, but yes, to the things you're asking, I really look forward to getting the materials out to you between now and the next meeting and, and having this conversation, you know, in more detail when we meet again.
Councilor Rotundo?
Sorry, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, one other question that just popped into my head. Is it traditional, and I'll claim ignorance on this one being sort of a new council still, on leasing school buses, is that typically under the city-side budget, or does that come under the school-side budget? On a tip, oh, sorry, diesel, say. Would we typically, I mean, I know we're looking for a ten-year lease, which is what you're coming to ask for, but typically, would this be something that the school would have to really be looking at if it was traditionally a diesel?
Yeah. So with, with the, um, with the lease to own purchases of the diesels, those have been carried in the school budget? With last year's first EV coming in and, and this second one we're asking for, I've made the commitment to them that these two leases will carry on the city side. If, again, if you approve this one to add to the first one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Then I will refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number two ninety-one from our budget analyst, Jerry Perry. It was a informational of FY twenty-one tax rate approval from the state.
Thank you. He, uh, Mr. Perry put that together for our benefit, so I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Cool move.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
Inguanci?
Yes.
Order two number, two ninety-two. Dear Honorable City Council, due to the resignation of John Fraze as Ward Six City Councilor and the appointment of Dominic Copeland as Ward Six City Councilor, I hereby appoint Dominic Copeland to the Committee on Legal Affairs and designate Councilor Scott Hausmann as Chair of the Committee on Legal Affairs. Respectfully, Paul Inguanci, Council President.
Thank you. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
Inguanci?
Yes, so the Committee on Legal Affairs is Chair, Councilor Hausmann, Councilor Copeland, and Ward Five City Councilor Kathleen Feldman. One of these days, we'll get back into committees. Um, Ms. Kent?
Order number two ninety-three, a letter from Councilor Cop- Copeland for the sinkholes in Beverly Farms.
Uh, Councilor Copeland, what would you like to do with this one?
That's why I wanted to get some, um, because I was looking to get some insight and, and maybe some, some resolution, how we can move forward with it. Um, the, the, the big problem is the property is divided up between the homeowner, the city, and the MBTA. Uh, and there's about close to a hundred yards of sinkholes that go along sort of a direct line, uh, that abate the train station, and there's also a drainage pipe that goes down that way as well. Um, so I think, uh, there's a video that I think Mike Collins has requested, which I have now, uh, but the problem's getting worse, so at some point, um, that whole area is just going to collapse. And we're starting to see that happen now. Uh, so I just wanted to see, you know, how we can get resolution to move forward on that.
Okay. Why don't we do this? We'll refer that to the Committee on Public Services and refer that, make sure that, um, Commissioner Collins gets a copy of it. And Ms. Kent, could you invite him into our meeting on the nineteenth?
Yep, okay, thank you.
And the mayor will see that also, I'm sure. Good, nice work. Um, communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number two ninety, a petition from National Grid for Plan two nine four nine six five eight eight to install a fifty-five feet of one-point-three-inch PVC conduit between intersection of Hale Street and East Corning Street.
I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing, uh, on Tuesday, January nineteenth at seven fifteen, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
Inguanci?
Yes. Uh, and that is all we have on our agenda this evening, Ms. Kent. No reports from committees. Does anybody? No, right? Correct? Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add or say? Mayor Cahill, you're good?
Yes, sorry, I was doing something else. Sorry, no, I'm good. You're all wonderful, and this has been a, a great meeting.
No, really, a very good meeting. Very, uh, going through that master plan was great, and I look forward to, uh, uh, voting in the affirmative on the nineteenth. Uh, that will be our next city council meeting on Tuesday, um, January nineteenth at seven PM.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Oh, Ms. Dixon, what's up?
I thought there was a constable appointment.
Do we have that, or can we do that on the nineteenth?
I thought it was under legal affairs.
Oh, it is. It came in, uh,
Committee?
Carryover from last year.
Christian Rivera, I believe?
Right on it.
On my agenda.
Okay. So we'll just have to pick it up on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Got it. The old one. Order number two eighty for a constable for Mr. Christian Rivera of Nine Williams Street, Roxbury.
It's already been vetted by the police department, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
Inguanci?
Great teamwork, yes. Great teamwork in the city clerk's office. Always good to have each other's back. Didn't we just talk about that today, Ms. Kent?
We did, um, we really need to have each other.
Okay, so next meeting Tuesday, uh, because Monday is the holiday, Tuesday, the nineteenth, seven PM. Uh, Council Flaherty and I will get together or, uh, somehow schedule the first meeting of the Charter Review Committee. We've been trying to hold out until we could meet in person, but that's not going to happen. So we'll figure it out remotely. We'll touch base with the city solicitor, um, so that she knows what our intentions are, because we will need her help in this one. Uh, great meeting. Uh, thank you all that moved here. Uh, Mr. Copeland, what do you think? We're not that bad, right?
Now, I, I made it through my first meeting. I thought it was wonderful, so, so thank you.
Great job. Great questions, to the point, very succinct. Uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. President? Yep.
Second. I think some people want to say.
This is Councilor Hausmann?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to, uh, mention that, uh, um, Councilor Copeland has requested a, a meeting, a subcommittee meeting, uh, of legal affairs, uh, which, uh, I'm, I'm hereby letting Councilor Feldman know, uh, so that, uh, perhaps, uh, we could have sort of an orientation legal affairs meeting, uh, for Councilor, uh, Copeland. And, uh, I'm, I'm more than willing to do that, and we'll, we'll set up a time for a meeting. Um, I've already spoke with the city solicitor, you know, we'll do it in the ordinary coast, it'll be posted and so forth. Um, and obviously, uh, uh, counselors, uh, uh, the committee, the whole, be, be invited as well to attend. Uh, we haven't talked about setting a time, but just wanted to give everyone a, a heads up on that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I know we spoke about that earlier, and of course, I forgot. Um, but if we can get that done before our next city council meeting, that would be great, Councilor Hausmann.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
All in your court. You are the newly appointed chair. So our, uh, we have a, uh, we have a first and a second on, on a motion to adjourn. Could we have a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matando?
Yes.
Inguanci?
Councilor Hausmann, you sounded dejected. We can continue. I'm going to say yes. Good night, everybody. Great job. Glad you did work.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Happy New Year.